The current language in 11106, I did make a copy for everybody but I'll read it and to replace it with a new language. And it would read, "All rejected ballots shall be endorsed on the back of the ballot envelope with these words, 'rejected because,' and then they'll give the reasons therefore. And that said envelope then shall be signed by the members of the precinct board members and returned to the commission at the election return center after the polls close." So that's the amendment. And so I want to make sure that the commission members understand it. Then you, if you have any objections, I think maybe this would be the best time to discuss it, or do I need to pass a copy up there to you then to read again?
Do you have a copy? Okay. Is there any discussion on Speaker Wampad's amendment? Does everyone understand? Did you have anything?
Maybe to explain, because in the discussion before lunch Senator Martha Ruth had brought us to a different section in Chapter 10 of the language for the absentee ballot and that she had suggested that because this is in a different chapter, that also it be in the language, also similar to that, be in the Chapter 11. And but what it is, is to make sure that it's consistent as well on Chapter 10. It's just that if one, Chapter 10 is on the absentee ballot, Chapter 11 is will be the actual election day ballots. But it has the same language, but two different cases of voting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we should have this copied and pass it around so we can all read through it. And we've provided the copy.
Okay, well, we'll wait for the copy to be circulated. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, let's take a look at the copy before we enter into discussion so we can just read it thoroughly in front of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll take a short break again.
You probably can keep going, because we've done that with so many other issues while it's being copied. The others might not be controversial.
Okay, so we'll come back. We can go, okay, we'll go back to that. We'll go to 11107. Is there any discussion on 11107? Section 11110? Section 11111? 11113? Speaker Wampad?
On 11112, on defective ballots, because I know this whole discussion was on rejected ballots and now defective ballots. And I had, the question I have, of course, is in the presence of at least two commission members. And I have no objection to that, but I think the whole purpose of when, you know, we, that when you look at the precinct members, you have representatives, of course, of both sides of the parties. With the two commission members, I just want to make sure that it's also both representative will be there. That's being fair to both sides.
It is called a resolution committee. And in the 2010 election, it was Democratic member Alice Tyrone and myself. And we go over the ballot and we, we agree or disagree on, you know, the reason for it to be defective and spit out by the tabulator. In the event that it is torn, we have to redo the ballot. So the two of us have to do it.
But it's not clear here. It says that, like you said, it'd be one from each side, and I'm just saying that maybe...
If you want to put it in statute, that would be fine, but I believe it is in the election manual.
Is it like an...
But it does, historically and traditionally, it is always one member from each party.
Yeah. So then that, maybe I think we should use that language, and so it's one, one commission member from each party?
Yes.
So if they have two, two commission members, then maybe comma, one member from each party?
That would be fine, yes.
So that's my amendment for 11112. That at least two commission members, I guess, comma, one member from each party.
On the amendment, no objections, motion carries. We now have before us Speaker Wampad's amendment on 11106. Okay, we'll, yeah, Senator Speaker?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chairman, I certainly support the Wampad amendment, but I just want to ask, wasn't there also an allegation that some ballots were rejected without going through this process?
I'm sorry, Senator, can you...
How was rejected ballots or spoiled ballots handled in the past?
For this particular one, it's handled at the tabulation center. If I heard you right, you said there was an allegation?
Yeah.
What was the allegation?
Well, that, well, that the ballots were, that the spoiled ballots were not, were not handled this way.
No, this is not a spoiled ballot. This is a...
Oh, this is the reject that gets shot out of the tabulating machine, right?
Right. But to answer your question on the spoiled, I don't believe that is true.
Okay, but with the spoiled ballots, there's also a certification process?
Well, on the spoiled ballot at the precinct, what they do is they put an X on it and put it in an envelope.
Okay. But if a ballot is rejected by the tabulator machine, then that's when it goes to a hand count?
No, it goes to the resolution committee, which would be a member of each party.
But then they end up hand counting those ballots, right?
No, what we do is the resolution committee, and I'll use the 2010 election as the example. Chairwoman Tyrone at the time and I would review the ballot and if it's, it was rejected because it was torn or folded. And that, although, you know, it might happen often because you're talking of more than 40,000 ballots, right? So it's bound to happen where the machine accidentally...
With the moisture also, right?
Yeah. And so we need to redo that so that the tabulator will take it. So we go to the precinct's box because we have all their supplies by that. We have additional ballots that have been accounted for, and we pull a ballot assigned to that precinct. And we redo the, we make a copy, or we copy the original ballot onto the new ballot, and then we both sign it and we put a serial number on it. And we give back to the tabulators the clean, unfolded, untorn ballot, and that goes through the machine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Senator. Senator Duenias, did you have a discussion? You're fine. Any other discussion on Speaker Wampad's amendment? Speaker, would you like to close? No? Okay. Any objections to the amendment? No objections, motion carries. We're now back in 11113? 11120? Section 11121? Section 11122? Section 11125? 111... Speaker Ben, you recognize?
I have a question. There was a, and I guess I just want to see if it fits in any of these with the certification of the results, et cetera. When a candidate wants to review the ballots itself after an election, and I'm speaking specifically to the request, a couple of elections ago maybe, by the candidate for mayor in Baragada, who saw and asserted that there was an inordinate amount of spoiled ballots or, or something was out of the ordinary when we looked at all of the ballots cast for that village versus what has happened, what happened in the past year. And that the numbers of spoiled ballots was such that, or the number of uncounted ballots, overvotes, undervotes, was so good, so great that it would have, if there was any kind of resolution on those, that the election may have turned one way or the other. And he had requested that, that they be allowed to look at the ballots after the declaration of the results of the election. And the election commission kept informing him that they can't do that by law, that by statute, once the ballots are put away, nobody can retrieve them. Can you...
After the results are certified and provided that there is no pending court case, I believe 30 days after that, under the commission's vote, it can be reviewed.
So why was he never allowed to do that?
I don't recall that particular case, sir.
You don't?
No.
Were you sitting in the last election?
Yes. I think I was there, but I don't recall that particular request.
John, do you recall the mayor from Baragada? Mayor Ogun making the request to look at those ballots?
I, I would have to take a look at, you know, what we, because there were quite a few complaints on that particular race. And there were, there were quite a few complaints in that mayoral race. But, you know, unless I could see, I mean, four years, six years, that's a long timeline. I'm sorry.
You know, I, I believe he even put his request in writing, and he was told that he can't. I may, I think I wrote to you guys as well. I don't remember.
Perhaps it went to the executive director, but it never made it to the commission, to the full commission. I don't recall ever reading a letter requesting that he look at the ballots. But perhaps when he initially came in, a staff member who I'd like to think is aware of, you know, what governs us, would have told him that, that we cannot open the ballot boxes until a certain number of days after the election. Whether he came back after the number of days required, I am not aware of that since I was not, since the letter, his request, never made it to the commission. And if you yourself wrote a letter, I don't ever recall reading your letter regarding that matter unless I just, you know, did not read correspondence, but...
Because he was pursuing it for more than 30 days after the election. Almost a year later, he was still asking to review the ballots because of the, just the disproportionate number of spoiled ballots in that, in that village, in that race. So where would, so if you were to assure me that, that somebody can review those ballots, where would that be in here?
I know it's in there. I just need to find the number. I believe it's in a later chapter. You might find it if we can all look perhaps in Chapter 15. It might be in there, unless the executive director can pinpoint it for us quicker than I would.
Okay, Speaker Ben, they're finding the answer, so we'll come back to this. So that's 11129. I recognize Senator Duenias?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this may be part of the renumbering sequence that I'm not following, but Mr. Chair, starting with Section 1117, going all the way through 11121, those are completely struck. And when I take up the reading once again on the renumbering, I'm not seeing those titles anymore and the content thereof. Adding to ballots inbox, adding ballots boxer and count, taking or destroying ballots, interference with board commissioner votes, removing or defacing results posted. Have those been moved to another section?
Yes, Senator, it was removed to Chapter 8. So this is similar to what we discussed yesterday?
Okay.
Where it was, it was moved.
So this, now, okay, so I'll move to Chapter 8 and I'll do my homework. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker Wampad?
Just move to 11126 when you have the word same. Is that just, several of us read the top and this second, so is that just maybe something you need to delete or what? Why do you have same? Same correction or completion? And I know the above is incomplete. The bottom says complete. So same doesn't need, does not need to be there? Chapter 11126.
According to the commission, yes, it doesn't need to be there, so if you'd like to move to delete it?
So, yes, we just move to delete.
Okay. The motion to delete the word same on 11126, no objections, motion carries. We're still on 11129? We'll move on now to 11130? We're now in Chapter 12, election contests. We're on Section 12, 101. Speaker Ben, you recognize?
Is that where the prohibition on the review of the ballots maybe? 11132? Commission shall not review any ballot except as permitted on a recount?
It could mean that this is having to deal with the provisional ballots itself. It does say in 11134, if you look further down, that the commission shall be responsible and they will produce such ballots upon order of, order of a court of competent jurisdiction and shall obtain receipt of any release from its custody.
No, this must be it, because this Chapter 11 is more preparation than declaration.
There is a specific subsection that gives us the number of days that it cannot be, you know, opened. Yeah, except on a recount. Which is this, which is the one you referred to. In Chapter 7 is ballot, so that's where I'm looking right now.
Are you okay with that, Senator? Thank you. We're on Section 12, 101? 12, 102? 12, 103? 12, 104? 12, 105? 12, 106? 12, 107? 12, 108? 12, 109? 12, 110? Section 12, 111? Section 12, 112? 12, 113? Section 12, 114? Section 12, 115? Section 12, 116? 12, 117? Section 12, 118? Section 12, 119? 12, 120? Section 12, 121? 12, 122? 12, 123? Chapter 13, special elections? We're in Section 13, 101? 13, 102? 13, 103? 13, 104? 13, 105? 13, 106? 13, 107? 13, 108? We're in Chapter 14 now, provisional voting. Section 14, 101? 14, 102? Section 14, 103?
I know I'm probably beating this dead horse, but we've got to, we've got to figure out some way that we address the identification issue. I have in my possession an affidavit from a voter who claims that in the last election, he went to vote in Santa Rita and he was denied, well, no, he was given a provisional ballot because his, his date of birth did not match exactly the date of birth on his birth certificate. And so he was given a provisional ballot and somehow he's, he got a copy of the, of what was done with the provisional ballots for his precinct. And he's marked as a, the reason why he was given a provisional ballot was that he was not registered, and then it was confirmed that he was not registered, at least that was the GEC review, and the recommendation was reject the ballot. And so this person was, vote was not counted because there was a mistake in his identification which didn't match his, his birth certificate. And I know that happened here, that happened here in my day and age, all right, when things weren't exactly... I have an aunt who's about the same age as myself, and her, her name was Benny, and she's marked as male because everybody just assumed that that name belonged to a boy. And for the longest time, we had to, I mean, we had to go to court to try to prove that there was no sex change in this, that this is actually what... And so I'm just saying, how is there, is there, can, with all the combined knowledge that you all have as commissioners, is there some way that we can provide some better avenue for identification so that we don't have these kinds of situations?
If he was refused a ballot because his name did not appear on the roster, the precinct...
No, he wasn't the same, there were several with the same name, but the birth dates were different. And there have been times, many times from our generation where the, the reporting, you were born at home and you weren't reported in public health until three days later. So your birth certificate's different from what you... So I'm just saying, is there some way that all of you can give, can recommend to us that we have some kind of uniform or some kind of identification so that we don't... I mean, I'm, I'm shocked. I mean, I was provided with a copy of the listing from 5A, and this is just one precinct in Santa Rita. And I have 50 from that, from that precinct that were rejected. And the recommendation from GEC was all reject ballot, advise voter, reject ballot, and I only got the listing from number 26 to number, number 50. Maybe our commissioner, I mean, our executive director might want to look at this list. Maybe our commissioner, I mean, our executive director might want to look at this list.
While he's going up there with the list. On page 130, section 14, 105 on disposition. B, the opportunity to remedy incomplete provisional ballots. Is that the individual will be given seven days then to comply or supply the missing information. And I don't know, that must be the recommendation of the commission.
Mr. Vice Speaker?
Pardon?
On page 130, section 14, 105 on the disposition. B, section B, subsection B. That then the provisional voter will be notified and be given a seven-day period to comply or supply the missing information.
I understand, and what I'm, what I'm saying is what I provided to the executive director was a listing from 5A. This is just one precinct out of the, what, how many precincts do we have? 58. And in one precinct, I was only received the page that has number 26 to number 50 in alphabetical order. And so if it's 50 times 28 precincts, or 50 times 58 precincts, that's a lot of votes that we're we're not counting. And so all I'm saying is, can all of you, with all of your experience in running elections, please advise us, how do we, what can we do to address this issue? There was one suggestion that was given to me, and I'll toss it out, and maybe we can discuss it. There is one identification that belongs to a person that's almost that is only one, and that's the social security number. In, in the, I can't remember now when we, when we register, does our registration have us put down our social security number? It doesn't need to be put on the voter the printout that you send out to the to the villages. But, I mean, to the precincts. But if Central has it, and you call in and you say Benjamin Cruz, and I give you my social security number, though I may have been born on March 3rd, and I wasn't reported at public health until March 8th. And there's this two different, there's a Benjamin Cruz who's March 3rd, but my one of my, my birth certificate says March 8th because I was reported a few days later. Can it be confirmed downtown with, he's given this social security number and it's showing on something that he's provided me? This is his social security number, and someone from downtown will say that Benjamin Cruz is registered, I'll give him a ballot, let him vote. I'm just concerned, Mr. Chairman, from one precinct, I only have one page. And it's 26 to 50. And every single one of them says, reject, notify voter. Maybe the question I should ask is, commissioners, how many votes did we reject in this last election notifying the voter because they weren't registered or their ID was not, was insufficient?
I think, Vice Speaker, if you, if you read this list, it's not only from one precinct, okay? There's at least three different precincts here. I, this list looks familiar. I think what had happened, or what the commission did, is that they went through each one to verify, in fact, if they weren't registered. And the comment under this, the individual you have submitted, confirm, not registered in precinct. Do you know if, if the guy went down to the commission to check? Re-verify?
That's a list from you guys.
No, this is a provisional there's additions to this list, okay, like I said, it looks familiar. But the staff went through and re-verified a lot, all of these things.
I understand, and that's what it's saying, there's a, there's a, the reason that he was given a provisional ballot. Then there was a reason, then there was a recommendation of what to do with it. There's four columns there.
Yeah, under this particular individual, I guess he is registered but not in the precinct he went to.
And every single one of those in the 26 to 50, the recommendation was to reject their ballot.
Because
How many did we reject?
Well
And is there some way that we can reduce the number of rejected ballots with some kind of identification that's going to assist us to know that it's the same person? It's not an onerous requirement, but somehow I know I seem like I'm arguing from two sides in saying that I want to have, to make sure that we allow people to vote, but and not prohibit them from voting, but I also want to figure out some way that we can assist them. Because that's a lot of people to be rejecting.
No, I agree with you. But a majority of these people were not registered. That was the end result. They failed to vote in a previous election, that's why they were taken off the rolls. In this particular instance that you're pointing out, he was registered, but registered in a different precinct, okay? That's the only particular case with this individual.
He's saying he was rejected because his birth date did not match, his affidavit in the beginning.
I'm just reading what's, what's on the list here.
Is there, is there a recommendation of how, how we can have identification so that we don't have rejection, the number of rejections that we had in any of the previous elections? And the recommendation?
Requiring that they include their social security number is a surefire check on the identities of these people. But the legislature did in fact pass a law that prohibited the election commission from recording and asking for our social security numbers. So that was not an option for the commission. But that would be the best way. I think perhaps at the time, to request for a social security number, you know, that's a very private thing, you need to protect that. And so if, if we are recording them and keeping them in the computers, the question arises of whether people will have access to social security numbers in the event of hacking or other means to obtain the identification numbers. But the recommendation, and at one time, the commission did require that number. So putting it, the executive director
Is there a way that we can do it where we get the first two digits, star the next four, and then the last three digits or something, just so that
Yes.
You don't have a complete set at, at at the election commission, but I mean, trying to get four digits out of the nine digits is going to be pretty hard for you to go in and say, actually, you know, these are my first two and these are my last three in my, in my set, in my ID.
You can do that, like in, in an establishment, if you use your credit card, your bill always shows just the last four digits. It shows Visa or MasterCard, but then it only gives that last four digits.
Yeah, and I'm trying, that's what I'm saying. Maybe you don't get all
Yeah.
All nine numbers, but just the first two and the last two or something, but something that, because I, I just don't want us losing people not voting.
And, but when, if you do that, you also have to go within the realm of, what if the person doesn't have a social security number? What number is acceptable? Date of birth would be one. Perhaps mother's maiden name, which it already asks, I believe. But those kinds of information are not on the roster. So when a person is going to vote and the precinct official says, I'm sorry, your name is not here. That, the precinct immediately calls the election commission office, which is of course staffed throughout the day. And their job is to field all these calls from the different precincts to determine whether in fact it was a mistake on their part, that they just didn't include that person's name, or for some reason. If in fact, he appears nowhere, an affidavit is not found, as far as they're concerned, this person is not registered. The provisional ballot is given, and he fills that affidavit on the ballot, on the, on the envelope of that provisional ballot. And technically, later on, that affidavit is viewed, or according to statute, is his registration from that day on. I think we discussed this in the first day, where I was saying, when I believe it was Senator Rispichio was talking about same-day registration. And technically, that is like same-day registration. Because he went to the poll, his name wasn't there, so he was given a provisional ballot. And technically, when you find that those provisional ballots have been adequately, completely, truthfully completed, then that ballot should be counted. Because that, he registered on that day.
And I'm just saying, Madam Commissioner, that if you look at the list I just gave your executive director, every single one on those, that list was rejected. The last page.
At this point in time, what the commission can do is go and weed out these provisional ballots, because they should all have the they should all still be in their envelopes. And in fact, that envelope, like Speaker Wampat was saying, you know, you put the reason why it was rejected. So this, these can be traced, so we can
I understand that it can be traced, I'm just saying, will it
But I can't sit here and tell you why they were
That there was enough ballots to change the election, I mean, I'm just that, I want, as long as we're doing the, going through this exercise and spending as many days as we are, I'm I'm pleading with you to please give me a suggestion on what would be the best way that we can assure people without it being onerous to get them, get IDs, or whatever it is that we can do to make sure that the greatest number of people are afforded the opportunity to exercise their right to vote. That's all I'm asking.
Understood.
Senator Rispichio? Mr. Chairman, just to follow, when those names are purged from the voter listing because they failed to vote in two consecutive general elections, isn't the law required that they are given a notice? Has that always been a practice of the Guam Election Commission? Maria?
I think you're right.
Senator, we did send out the letters this time.
This time, but in the past?
I don't think so, no.
Yeah, I don't think so either, and that's, and that's where you have a a situation that gets complicated, because people go to the polls and they're not given a notice that, because they failed to vote in two consecutive general elections, so if the law requires that they're given a notice, and this is just being done under under your practice, Maria, then wouldn't those names that were purged without being notified by the election commission, wouldn't they have been purged illegally? If the process provides that they're given a written notice that their name was purged, and in previous elections, their names were purged and not notified by the election commission, how do you remedy that situation? Where they were purged illegally because the, you didn't, the election commission didn't follow the process all the way through?
And in fact, I think it requires two notices.
Well, even
The first one being informing the voter that we are going to remove your name.
And our two notices sent?
And then they remove the name, and then another notice goes, we have removed your name.
And so what happens if those names are removed and the voter is not notified? And they show up to the poll, again, they, they weren't they were given, they didn't go through the due process provided by law that they have to be notified twice that their name was purged. They were purged without being notified?
Well, that provisional ballot that he's given is, is the mechanism for getting him back into the rolls. And in fact, the, these people who were given provisional ballots can contact the Guam Election Commission to find out if their votes are counted.
But can you, can you swear under oath, Commissioner Ruth, that if somebody, if somebody was taken off the voter listing because they failed to vote in two consecutive general elections, and the Guam Election Commission failed to notify them twice, if that's proven, then shouldn't their votes be counted? Through the provisional process?
Yes.
Because, again, they were taken off by an error of the Guam Election Commission, or the Guam Election Commission didn't follow the entire process by notifying them?
Yes.
And then so those ballots
But it could, it could be any, one of several reasons. He may not have filled in all the required information.
But why then were these provisional ballots that the vice speaker pointed out, why then were they rejected?
Because the roster said that they were not registered.
But they were purged because they didn't vote, hypothetically, they were purged because they didn't vote in two consecutive general elections, and this Guam Election Commission didn't properly notify them? That their names were purged?
I'm not aware that that is the reason why they were turned away or given provisional ballots, that, that they were purged. I don't know that for a fact that they were taken off the rolls because they were purged.
Now, is the
But with the fact that they're not registered
Is it possible then to go back and determine all those names that were purged? And if they weren't given two notices, is it possible, do you have the statutory authority to put them back on the list? Without them having to reregister?
I would think so.
Has that
That's a legal question that I'm not really at liberty to
Don't you think that's something that
But just off the top of my head, you should be able to
Would you bring that up at a board meeting and make the motion perhaps that if somebody was taken off the voter list and not notified twice, that the Guam Election Commission put them back on the list?
I can make the motion, Senator, yes. And according to code, if they weren't notified properly, they should have never been removed anyway. That's, that's what it says in code. So hypothetically, if, if we cannot prove that we sent out notices to all of these people who are giving provisionals, hypothetically, we could add them back to the rolls without having them come back down and reregister, yes.
What's the, what's the thinking behind purging the list anyway, other than the voter expired? What is the rationale for removing them from the voter list if they, if they failed to vote in two consecutive elections? I mean, aren't we punishing the voter for not coming out to vote?
Why, I wouldn't use the word punishing, but we need to keep track of who these, the voters are. And that is
But what is your concern? I mean, I'd rather err on the, I'd rather err on the side of caution and have them on the list, and they're still eligible to vote, than to take them off the list, because in, you know, you're familiar when it's the primary and general elections, Senator Ruth and members, when we go precinct to precinct, and we thank the people for standing there and voting, and and we run into all kinds of voters to say, I don't know why my name was taken off the list. So do you think we can have some kind of policy shift here? Where that rather than purging the list, we keep them on the list, other than the fact that they may have expired?
Yes, we can consider it, yes.
Would you need statute to allow you to do that? Would you need statute to allow you to do that? And if so, is that something that can be done here? Because we're, we're providing, again, we're providing for greater participation in our democratic process, it's those kinds of thinking that, that goes against the grain of this very exercise.
Would, would that be, then, sort of the same section or subsection that you would require a social security number? Do you, it's, it's up to you folks to require that and put that back? Because at one time in our voting history, we were required to give those numbers, but no longer...
Yeah, until such, until such time, we had to face identity theft with, you know, these cyber crimes and, and people stealing our...
But like Vice Speaker Cruz said that...
But you can do like XXXX in the last four digits or something.
Yes.
But before we go any further...
But would that be in the same, same subsection or same chapter, perhaps?
Yeah, certainly, but before we go any further, Senator Ruth, can, can we come to an agreement that this bill does not provide for same-day registration? I thought we resolved that yesterday. And you keep saying this does provide for same-day registration, because someone goes in, they says, "I'm a voter," they're given a ballot, they're given an affidavit, that ballot is put in the provisional box, and if it's determined that they were illegally taken off the voter listing, then that vote is counted. You know, or maybe through an error of the Guam Election Commission or staff omission. But if, in fact, they were taken off that voter registration legally, then that provisional ballot will not be counted, so their vote will not be counted. So it's not same-day registration in that sense.
In the, in, in that particular case, then, the affidavit that he would be filling out is to put him back on the rolls and not necessarily registering...
But his vote will not, but his vote will not be counted. Maybe in the next election, his, he can vote. But, but for that same-day registration and that vote that he cast on that primary or general election day, that vote will not be counted.
Well, I'm of the contention that it should be counted, especially if he provided all the necessary information.
So then, so then why...
But that is just, you know, as a...
So why is that not the practice? Because the only way that vote will be counted is, in fact, he was improperly taken off the voter registration list. Or let's say he registered, but the voter registrar failed to submit a copy of the passport, so then he's not eligible, but he, at the time, he, he registered months prior, he did provide all those documents, and if it's, if it's found through the fault of the registrar or the agency, then that ballot will be counted. But if, if it's, if no one is at fault, and he or she should not have been on the voter registration list because their name was purged because they missed two general elections, then that vote is not counted. I just, I just think, I just don't want to go two steps forward, 10 steps backwards.
Yes.
Just say yes.
If I may be so bold, yes, but if I may be so bold, maybe, Mr. Chairman, you can call a 30-second break, and so we can check the election manual and see exactly what it says.
Well, we talked about this yesterday, and Commissioner Mesa said this does not provide for same-day registration, and of that opinion.
I'll discuss that with him.
If you're okay, Senator, we'll take a short break.
Not really okay, but just go ahead.
It's okay.
No, they're, they're very, the...
The committee of the House is now back on.
You are in exactly which section?
We are in Section 14103, however, before we took a break, there was Speaker, Senator Spisho had a question.
Yes.
So you ready to answer?
Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh. Oh, I was, I want to call your attention to the next subsection, 14104 and onward. And in, in 14104, toward the end, it just, it, it talks about what I had said earlier, that they're even required to be notified. And then 14105, disposition, I'll give you a minute to read that part.
But before-
And this is, this is existing statute, and with, with some changes. Yes, sir.
Before we get to the disposition, in the last election with that list, I'm not sure, I, please forgive me, I'm not sure if you were named before the election or after the election, so I, I'm not sure when everybody was, was, was serving. But in the last election, were those people on that list pursuant to subsection B of 14105 told that they have a seven day period within which to remedy their situation?
I have nothing to show, I don't have nothing with me to show that in fact they were notified.
But, but under the law, they, you, in A and B, in 14105, in B, they are told, within seven days, you are to come back to the commission, prove to me that you were born on March the 3rd, not March the 9th, and that your, that your ballot should be counted.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just asking, in the last election, were all these people told, you have seven days within which to count, to, to come back to us, so that if you don't come back to us, or if you do come back to us, we can use A and count your ballot?
I don't believe that-
Because under A, you can count your ballot. I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the various problems were in the last election. Because I mean, yesterday, there was a move to try to remove in the legislative intent, as if there were no problems in the last election, a provision in the intent that they're, to remove that. I think maybe what needs to be done at this point is, I know that there have been members of this legislature that have been asking the election commission for the subcommittee report on the findings of the commission as it relates to problems in the last election. Can that be put on the record, Mr. Chairman, and can we get copies of it?
Joe?
I guess to get to the bottom of it, we could subpoena the former executive director.
I, but, do I understand that there is a written subcommittee report of allegations of problems in the last election?
I have not seen a report, but the subcommittee would report verbally to the commission whenever we met, every month. They did report to us, and the minutes would reflect those reports to the, the full commission.
There's, there's no one single written report compiling their findings?
Not that I'm aware, perhaps Mr. Mesa, because Mr. Mesa was a member of the subcommittee, so I'll re-defer to him.
Yes, and, and you know, just, just to clarify as well, during the public hearing on this bill, we did request the commission to provide us this report, and we know there was a report, and we're waiting for their legal counsel to clear them, to be able to provide it to us. But can someone just please answer if we do have this report, if you do have a report?
Yes, we do have the reports. And I think in the last public hearing, our legal counsel, Jeff Cook, said that he would make sure that you got it, and something about, we were not able to answer the questions, oh, he wanted to say that we were not prepared to answer those questions, but the initial discussion ensued. And so he was going to get back when the public hearing was, was going to be scheduled. But we do have the report, senators, and those will be forwarded when, upon legal counsel's review.
How long ago was this, this request made?
Um-
The public hearing was when?
In, I'm sorry, sir, I don't, I don't remember.
Was it more than yesterday, was it longer than yesterday? Was it over a week ago?
Um, yes, it has been. It has been maybe two months, sir.
Two months?
Yes.
And two months, this legislature's been sitting, waiting for a report, that you've not been able to get your legal counsel, or you as a commission, to agree to send a request that was made at a public hearing?
Um-
And I'm just saying, now we need to know what it is, so that we know how we're going to address these sections.
Okay. Vice Speaker, I believe part of the answer, too, was that when the oversight or public hearing is scheduled, we will come up with, they will come up with a report.
Maria- But we will send you the report. Maria, even the other day, I asked for the status of report, because you recall, Senator Yamashita tried to delete the legislative intent. And then I said, maybe rather than deleting the legislative intent, we get a copy of that subcommittee report and highlight what those irregularities are with the previous elections. But, but, but just so I may to understand, did, did this subcommittee report go from the subcommittee to the Attorney General's office? Was it reviewed by the, by the main committee? What, what's, what, what was the process of how this report went from the subcommittee to the Attorney General? Because Senator Ruth is saying that she hasn't seen any written report.
And, and Alice Dyerone was the chairman up until, well, she's still the chairman, actually, but she probably would know better.
But were those findings adopted by the, by the Guam Election Commission Board? And, and how did it go from the subcommittee to the Attorney General, is my question?
If I may defer to Mr. Carrillo, because he said he was there.
Um, when I came on board, we reviewed, I reviewed the minutes of the commission meetings. In the minutes, former member Robert Cruz made a statement that everything was sent to the Attorney General. So those minutes were early on, maybe in January of 2011. So from those, I went back and checked the commission, the subcommittee reports. And so those, I think, those, we presume, based on Bob Cruz's statement, went to the Attorney General. When we checked with the Attorney General, there was no, you know, they didn't, there was no confirmation that it was received.
But it, it goes, it must have gone through the full board, in order for that motion to be made, that it be forwarded to the Attorney General, and to be adopted?
Yes, it did.
Welcome.
Yes, and so I guess, you know, even prior to the public hearing, we, the committee did send a letter to the commission, seeking a copy of that. And is that something that you would need your attorney to clear before you provide us, or is that something you can provide us now?
Um, we can provide it to you now.
And I think that's what the, the senators are requesting.
So, one of two things, either provide it to us now, or let's take a recess, call your attorney, tell him to show up. He says he's on call yesterday. So he's, if he's on call, have him come, give advice to release that to us, so that we can look at it.
Yeah, point of information, I, I do remember during the public hearing, and he even opened with, "I was afraid we were, we would go down this road." And one of the reasons why we had discussed the possibility of deleting the language was, was because of the legal, possible legal implications, saying that, yes, over the years, there have been problems that need to be corrected with elections, but when you get into the criminal, or the, the level whereby you have litigation, then that's almost substantiating and, and agreeing with that prior to even the outcome, you don't even know what you're fixing. So I think that's very important at this point, because I do remember Counsel Cook saying that this was a concern of his, and, and when we opened, and he's, he's repeated that several times. So I think we need to get that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we recess until we get counsel here to, to tell us whether or not we can or cannot review this report.
Okay, on the, on the motion, no objections?
Motion is to bring counsel and the report.
Yes.
Vice Speaker.
Okay. Okay, we're on brief recess. Report, the subcommittee report that was filed with all the complaints from the 2010 elections, we have as well here the legal counsel for the Guam Election Commission, and since he's here now, we could, if there's any questions from the body, to, to ask him. And while this report is being provided to us, we can review it, use the night to review it, and come back tomorrow to ask the commission any further questions. So at this time, we'll recognize the vice speaker.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cook, the one question that I've been trying to get from the commission members, and I know that there was a time in the past that you and I and Joe were on, I mean, we've been working elections since before that one was born, I think, our chairman, and so, so I'm trying to figure out-
You have your-
Yes, that far back. I, is there, do you have a recommendation on, on how we can address the issue of identification, without it being so- So onerous in trying to get it done, that we preclude people from voting, but somehow still be able to protect the integrity of an election, of knowing that these people can and should be voting. I, just trying to find a, some kind of recommendation from the commission members, and also how to be able to address some of these, these things of, of identifications, were there problems? Is there, is there a way, and when, when you reviewed it, I don't know, I know you weren't hired by this, by the commission yet, when this report was compiled, right?
Correct.
Your post, post-report. You were hired after the report was, but in, in your review of it, ha, not that I'm trying to get attorney-client privileges, but can you recommend to us, not necessarily the same recommendations you're giving them, but some recommendation to this body on how we can improve this statute, so that we can get as many people involved in the election, and not have, turn this way, turn away as many people as were in the last election?
Vice Speaker, basically, I, my response is, regarding the 2010 subcommittee report, I have at best just gone over it. I have not gone over it in any detail. My understanding, from what I've both gleaned from looking at it, and from just general reports in the news, and discussions about it since that election, is the majority of the problems weren't really in the code itself, they were in the implementation of the code by the commission. That's my belief. So, and I, no, I haven't had any real discussions with the body as a body about that, and I know there was a, the subcommittee report was done long before I, I just became the commission's counsel in November. I, I believe I first saw the report in January, because I was off island in December. I know another member of my firm, I think, may have looked at it, too, but neither of us gave any really advice about it. All I can say is, from my review of it, it seemed to be more a, an implementation of the law than, than the law itself. As to your original part of your question about identification issues, the whole country seems to be grappling with that problem right now, and I would just say, and this is my opinion, just from my opinion, I'm not speaking in counsel for the commission, it seems like an awful lot of, of that grappling is, is for, for no good reason. My understanding is most reports, and I believe it's even true on Guam, I realize there were some problems with the 2010 election, but in general, even when we had very simple identification procedures, I don't recall that there was ever a large problem about people having problems being able to vote. I think it's a, it's a problem that's, that's almost being created, and I'm not saying for this body, or Guam, but in general, when you look across the country, it's being created versus that there's really a problem. So, for instance, when we were talking the other day about all of those identification procedures for registration, of, I mean, and then what people have to show, I mean, there's a big argument back in the mainland right now about what, what do you or don't you show when you actually show up to vote? So, I, I guess we have to kind of look and see what they're doing, and then this body has to decide what it thinks is best for Guam, and the voters of Guam. So I don't know that I can answer your question really very well at all. I wish I could. And it's something, obviously, I think we will be looking into more, but, but I, I believe, as I understand, the changes or the, what's been made in the, in this bill is not substantially different from what there was before. And whether there needs to be substantial change, I think that requires further review from, from you all. So I'm sorry, I'm not answering your question very well, and I'm not satisfying you, but that's, that, that's, that would be my opinion. And, and going back to the specifics of the 2010 and the violations in the committee report, I'm, I just have to say, if you review it, you'll know as much as I do.
Is, is the fact that, though you may have just been rehired as legal counsel for the board, you were legal counsel for the board for more than 10 years in the past?
Correct, 12 years.
12. So you've gone through several elections, and I'm trying to figure out if, I'm hoping, I mean, you know, that you're correct, that it's just an implementation problem, because yesterday, I raised a question about the married name and the, and the, and the not matching when it, when they came, and some people being turned away. And today, I presented an affidavit of one person that said it was the birth date that was different in the, in the, in the precinct rolls and his identification. And he was turned away, and then there was a question about whether or not he was given the 14105, and noticed that he had seven days within which to come to prove that he is in fact Benjamin Cruz, born on March the 3rd, as opposed to the one that was registered by Public Health three days later, because he was born at home or something. Okay? And, and those kinds of things happen in the old days, maybe not now. But some of those kinds of questions, and how to be able to address that, and I appreciate your, your, you're being frank about the fact that a lot of it was just implementation, that the, that we do have a good statute, that if it was followed, and the SOP was followed, we wouldn't have had as many problems as we had in the last, in the last election. I, and if that, if, if that is your recollection, then I'd be willing to, to move a little faster now. I just didn't know what kind of problems we were facing, and as I, as I was looking at him, I kept trying to figure out why the statute wasn't sufficient to be able to protect certain women to be able to vote, or certain men from coming in and, and having different birth dates, but it's the same person, the same year, the same month, it's a difference of a couple of days for, for, you know, and so, and the number of, of votes, I still haven't gotten an answer from many of the commission members, how many provisional ballots were not counted in the last election. But I guess I'll find that out in the, in the, when I read the commission report, or the subcommittee report. So I, it's just that I was hoping for some, some advice in that, you've had 12, 12 years of, of experience with the commission, it's not, you, you've had more experience with the commission than anybody up there, save for Joe. And, and so I'm just trying to figure out how, is there something that we can do to make sure that we don't have as many problems in the future?
Once again, I, going back to when I was previous legal counsel, I honestly don't remember us having these kinds of problems that I've heard about in the last couple of elections. I, I don't believe there were any substantial statutory changes that would have caused those problems. That's why I say, I just, now, it may be, I mean, going back into the 80s and early 90s, like if somebody, I'm trying to recall, and Joe probably has a better recollection of this, from his position as the exec for a while, I mean, if somebody showed up and there was a problem with their registration at the polling place, there was either a phone call made down to the office, and if there was a real problem, they were asked to go down to the office. Now, realizing that's a real hassle for people, but that's usually how it's dealt with, I think now there is this new section for the provisional voting, which would seem to, to, I mean, so nobody should be turned away, they should be allowed to provisionally vote, and then try to clean it up later. So I think that provisional voting section's probably a real good addition. But, but in general, I just, people being turned away, I don't recall that, if, back in my previous time, being something we ever, I mean, there were complaints every once in a while, but they were pretty, pretty rare.
I, I would probably agree with you that the provisional voting, provision in the statute is, is good, but then when I saw the listing that was prepared by the commission, which, I don't know if you have it in front of you up there, or if any of them will show you, where so many, at least in that one sheet, just on one sheet, 25 people from two precincts, their votes were, were, were not counted. They were given the provisional ballots, and, and the investigation was done by the commission, it was determined that their vote, they, they weren't registered for some reason or another, and just in that one sheet, 25 ballots were, were not counted. And-
Well-
I know that there are some people in the last, in this last election, who missed sitting in this hall for, for less votes than that.
Oh, I, I can't really answer that question. I mean, that's, if 25 people were told they had not registered, and they couldn't prove they were, I don't, I mean, unless, unless there's a question about the registration process itself not being properly done-
Well, then maybe we can go back to a different question. In the 12 years that you were there, how did you guys handle purging of the, the roles of people who did not vote in the two previous elections?
I'll refer.
Because my understanding is that there wasn't, there wasn't as much purging as there was most recently.
On the contrary, Senator. At that time, and in fact, I think it's only been within the last, maybe six years, somehow it was changed, the commission would purge every general, after every general election. Now, it's after two consecutive general elections. And when, when they were purged, they were sent to notice that they're no, no longer eligible. Right.
In a general election.
In a general.
Right.
And, and we can show that we've given notice to these people, complied with the notice requirement of, you've been purged?
Correct. Right. No, he said, "Give notice," right? And we're talking 12 years ago, okay?
Okay, 12 years ago.
Right.
But I'm talking about the 2010 election.
I'm talking 12 years ago. The answer, the question was 12 years ago.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, I know we're waiting for copies of the, of that subcommittee report, but can we also request for the transcript of that subcommittee meeting, that, that discussed, in any instance, they discussed those allegations of election fraud, as well as, as well as the minutes of the board meeting that adopted those findings, and where that motion was made to forward them to the Attorney General?
Senator, our meeting minutes, our commission meeting minutes are now up on the website.
Okay, so I can just-
You can just get those.
Okay. Okay, thank you for directing me there.
Okay, but the transcripts, I believe, are in that packet that are being copied.
Okay, and, and before we- Okay, and, and before we recess, there was some discussion about the manner in which voters are taken off the voter listing, attorney, and, and whether or not there's a requirement of law that they be given a notice. Commissioner Ruth was very correct to say the voter has to be given two notices that their names will be taken off the voter listing because they failed to vote in two consecutive general elections. Now, we've also come to the conclusion, it was confirmed that, that voters were taken off the voter listing without giving those proper notices, two notices again, and so the question I raised to the commission was, then, if those, if those names were taken off the voter listing, and that voter's due process was not followed by law, where they're required to be given two notices, should then those names be back on the voter listing? And then the answer, I believe, was they should, because they should have never been taken off the voter listing in the first place.
Senator, I'd have to, I'd have to research that, I, that's, that's something I can't answer off the cuff, because I would just like to leave it as I would have to research that. And, first of all, I, and I'm not, I'm not questioning your recitation of the statute, I don't know about the, as I recall, at least when I was commission lawyer before, it was one, one notice. If there is two now, you know, I just don't know how the cases would look at, you know, what is the obligation of the voter to know whether or not he's voted? So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, there's a notice provision, I would want to take a look at that from a legal standpoint before I just voice an opinion. I'm not saying I wouldn't necessarily disagree with you, I'd just rather review it.
Yeah, so, Ms. Chairman, that's something that we can, we can come back to, right?
Yes.
Or, or something that we can further discuss when we actually get a copy of the subcommittee report?
Yes. Okay. So, while we wait for the committee, the subcommittee report, if it's okay with the body, I'd like to ask that we just continue down, since we also have legal counsel here, there was a request from Senator Duaneus on the next chapter to have legal counsel here, so, if that's okay, we'll continue to proceed. We're still on section 14-105, any discussion? Section 14-106? We're moving on now to chapter 15, conduct of primary elections. We're in section 15-101. Section 15-103. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
I'm sorry, can we just go back to 14-105 quickly? Madam Executive Director, in that affidavit that I provided to you, with that list of voters from, from five and six, do you know if those individuals have since been registered pursuant to the provisional application that they did in their, in their affidavit? I mean, in the provisional voter registration? The reason why I'm asking this is, if you look at 14-105D, all those individuals that are on that list, who you say were not registered, are provisional registers, because they filled in the provisional ballot registration, should now be on the, on the rolls, right?
Vice Speaker, the answer to that question is no, and I'll tell you why. There exists no provisions or in statute relative to the procedures of provisional ballot. That is one of the new chapters that we are adding in, so none exists right now.
Then how, counsel, can you interpret D for me, 14-105D? The mandatory language in that? D, as in David?
If this law was in effect, then yes, but this law wasn't in effect before, this is new.
This whole section?
This whole section's new. Brand new. That's my understanding, once again. So, there wasn't any, there wasn't any-
Right.
Right, so that's where, kind of, I presume, it would been like it was, it used to be, where you told the people you have to go down to the office and have them check the application, registration applications there, because they didn't have any provision for doing this before.
I believe that there was a perception that it was put into place, and that perception came about because, in research, I think, the commission at that time transmitted to the 25th Guam Legislature proposed sections along with the rules and regulations, however, I think the research shows that the legislature never did anything at that time.
Vice Speaker, you still have the floor?
I'm sorry, I'm using what was given to us, and I didn't realize this was all brand new.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Okay, we're back on 15-104. 15-105. Section 15-106. Section 15-107. Section 15-109. Senator Pangolino?
You know, I have a, on the issue of, of the primary election is canceled when unnecessary, you know, I think this is one of the provisions that really allows for a lot of spoiled ballots, in my opinion, and I like to think that, because if you only cancel one side or one race, then they got to vote in that race, and then they tend to vote in the other race, you know, so if you don't have senatorial candidates, because you have 15, and you cancel those guys, you don't put them on the ballot, you don't have to cast a vote for them, but you cast a vote for the governor, they tend to go to the governor, and then go to the legislature on the other side. But I just want to make sure that this doesn't return, well, that's, that's why I'm just looking at this, I didn't read the entire thing, but I look at the ability to cancel it, and so, I thought, I, that's what I thought, I thought-
Yeah, it was a law that, we actually, we did it-
And that, that's still in place, we didn't change that.
Okay, so what does this do, then, as it relates to that law?
I think what was added in is number four, at line seven.
And 15-108 looks like it's new language, why is that even there? Mr. Chairman, Speaker Ben is absolutely correct to raise this issue, because you recall, in one, in a previous legislature, there was an amendment that required that if there's fewer candidates in the number of seats available, then that primary is canceled. So, if you only have 14 senators, there's no primary election for the legislature, but there's the primary election for other elected offices, and this legislature, we took over the majority, we were very clear to repeal that, so that we reflect what is happening, what has happened traditionally, where you have an election regardless of the number of candidates in one party.
We didn't change it.
And this language says that the Election Commission has the authority to cancel the same or fewer number of candidates running for nomination in the legislature and the number of senatorial seats allowed in law.
15-108.
Why is that there, when it's contrary to existing law?
15-108.
Existing law now is the way it's always been with the elections, is you have an election no matter what. You have a primary, I'm sorry, you have a primary election no matter the number of candidates you have at, for the legislature, or, or for mayors, if you recall, the Republican mayors were very upset because they, they didn't have to have a primary election, but when we restored the law to how it was traditionally conducted, those mayors had to have a primary election. Republican senators had to go through a primary election.
We didn't change it.
Okay?
You have my-
Once again, if I'm not mistaken, this is the current, I mean, this is the current law, but first of all, if I might, the commission didn't, the only reason this is underlined in here and written like this, and if, if reading section A, it says, "When the commission determines that all political parties that have qualified for placement," so, it seems like it goes both ways. If it's been amended since 29-102.5, then, then, that's, this is based on the current code that the-
But look at, look at-
No, this isn't new.
Look at 15-108A1, it provides that the primary election be canceled if the same or fewer number of candidates running for nomination in the legislature, then the number of senatorial seats allowed in law shall cancel such primary election for the legislature because of lack of any contest.
For all, for all political parties, so it'd be both sides? That's what it says, for all political parties.
No, he, you should add after candidates for all political parties, because if this thing were to be read independent from, from-
That's what it, that's what it says, Senator, I mean, it says in A, term is it all political parties, and then it goes on each section, and this is the current law, this is your law, this is, this is the current law as we understand it, unless, once again, it's been amended since public law, 29-102.5. Because this is the, the language that was in the most recent amendment, as far as the commission's aware, unless there's been another amendment since 29-102.
This is the exact one.
That's what I'm just saying.
Except number four.
Except number four is the addition. Unfortunately, the reason it's, it's all underlined as being new is because it's a new numbered section, but the actual language is coming from the current code, except for number four. Yeah, and just, just for the record, this, in the current code, is found at 16-108.
So, the way you would read this, Attorney Cook, is that if, if for all political parties, so, if the, yeah, yeah, then there's no primary for the legislature. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. That was their intent, right? I mean, I don't know why they said the four.
But then when you go down to items two-
That's where if one party-
But when you go down to item two, three, four, it only talks about one set of candidates running for governor, lieutenant governor, one set of candidate, yeah.
Vice Speaker Cruz, you recognize?
Maybe counsel might be able to answer this, even if that is the current statute, I'm just wondering, are we not denying people the right to be able to write, have a write-in by not having an election for that position?
In, in the primary, you're depriving, the body has deprived voters of having write-ins in elections in a primary.
And in an election, you always have, have, have another, there's always a blank at the bottom that you can fill in. I mean, even when there's 17 or 23, there's always additional slots at the bottom that you can decide, I'm not going to vote for any of these 23, I'm going to write two other names in, and just because there's only 13 doesn't mean that I should be precluded from writing two other names in for, for other people.
But that's for this body to decide.
No, I, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm just, that's why I'm asking counsel, maybe while we're at this, this is the time that we're going to have to say, we're denying people the right to vote for another person, and I don't believe that we should preclude them from that.
Vice Speaker, she, she wants to-
Or, if, if, if in fact, if in fact, there, there is only one set of candidates under the Democratic Party and one set of candidates, if everything is just one as the law or the bill proposes, and the election is canceled, the commission, in reality, really, we can still have a ballot, but only for write-ins, so that it would be just blank, so you provide a couple of lines for anybody, so that you're not denying those people who, in the very last minute, decided they want to run.
But, but what I'm, what I'm, now that I think about it, we're denying dozens of voters out there, what if I just decide that if whoever, the one candidate from the party that was, or the only name the party put up was not the name that I wanted, who's the commission, or even the legislature, to deny me my ability to be right, to write in a different name?
If I recall, the reason why this was introduced was, it was changed before, and it allowed the primary to be canceled for just that one side, and that's when all these problems occurred, and so, they went back and said, you just don't cancel it for, for either side, because we had gone away from, and I remember that, and, I mean, just history here, not saying anything, it was the Republicans, I think, that introduced that, my good friend, my former speaker, had worked on, on trying to do that, and so, when, when the time was opportune, it was reversed.
But what I'm, but the thing is, is that, not that I'm suggesting that we are, but what if we decided as a group here that we would only put up nine Democrats and six Republicans, since there's no need, under this statute, to have a, a primary, all 15 of us go straight to the, go straight to the general election, because there's no ability for anybody else to write in any other names?
Couldn't the commission, then, point of information, convene and make a decision that they would print a write-in-only ballot for additional candidates? Because there's a minimum requirement by law of three times-
I, I move to delete 15-108.
Okay, on the Vice Speaker's motion, Senator, you recognize?
I support that, but if we remove it here, it's still going to be in the statute, correct? If we, if we delete this section here, because it's a mirror of what's found in the GCA, deleting it here won't take it off the books.
Yes.
It will?
If you don't pass this, it won't.
Senator Blas, you recognize the amendment?
I think we're going to be throwing the baby out with the bathwater here with, with regards to that, and I recognize, and, you know, what is the function of the primary?
Right. It's party nomination.
Party nomination.
Right.
Right.
So basically, what basically need, really, it's traditionally, and is, it's the party that would nominate its, in the case of the legislature, its top fifteen or its, the fifteen individuals the party believes that will represent them. So it's a party nomination.
That's correct. I think back, way, way back, I don't think some of you were eligible yet, but when we used to have conventions, and that served as the party primary.
I mean, and in fact, if we throw, if we throw this section out, does that then, the responsibility of the primaries then fall on the party? Because in fact, if we throw out this section, and there's no primary, there's nothing by statute, then what is to govern?
I don't think it does away with the primary, it just, just provide, this provision allows
I'm still uneasy with, I'm, I'm going to object to the, to the amendment.
Thank you, Senator. There's an objection. Senator Plaschus?
I have a question, maybe, maybe for the legal counsel. If this, if this is deleted, if 15-108 is deleted, and this bill is passed, that means that the, the current statute, all of it, are wiped out. So by the deletion of this, there should be no primary? Because there's no provision to require a primary in, in, in all of this?
I'm sorry. 15-108 is just a specific statute regarding doing away with the primary if there's no, if there's no technical contest, but it would not do away with the primary.
Oh, okay, so, so-
It's just, it's just basically-
There's a different section here that requires that there be primary.
If there were fourteen Republicans and fourteen Democrats, with this bill as it's currently on the books, there wouldn't be a primary. That's basically what it says.
That's what it is.
That's all it is. So, so if this take an off, then there's clearly still a primary.
It won't be a primary for those parties, right?
Correct.
That doesn't indicate-
Well, for all political parties that have qualified, so if you had a third party, and they had sixteen, then you'd have a primary.
So, so my, my question then is that, so this is deleted, 15-108, and then this statute's adopted, this actually will replace the whole entire election law. So where in this proposal, in this bill, then, provides for a primary? Other than section 15-108? If there is, then, then, then it would be adopted along with this bill, then? See, the passage of this bill will replace the, the entire election law. And if this bill does not have a provision here, other than 15-108, a provision for a primary, then there's no provision for primary?
Do you want to clarify that?
Fifteen, that's what I'm saying.
And so it just, 15-108, it's just when there is no contest within political parties?
No, I, I support the idea of having a primary, regardless of the number of candidates.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that that statute, that provision is, is in this, in this bill.
It'll still be on, even if the, even if it's passed.
And I ask, what section is that?
This, Chapter 15 is the whole primary.
Okay, okay. We'll just make sure, because, because this bill will replace the, the entire election code, so I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, any other discussion? There's been an objection. Senator Mabini?
Just for point of clarification, going back to section 1115, on write-in votes, that would be page eighty-two of the new version. Could you explain how this would be, would impact that section that we're discussing right now? I think it was 1115, write-in votes. Section eleven, number 115.
Any question as if it is, if 15-108 is deleted?
Yes.
Then you still have the, you still have the ability to write in votes? Because then what we're saying is, a primary will be held regardless. Thank you. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, any other discussion? There's been an objection, so all those in favor to delete 15, I'm sorry, Senator Tom Adam?
Maybe if you could just clarify what you just said. If, if we get a scenario where there's only fourteen candidates on each side of the ballot for senator, for the legislature, there's only one candidate that's running for the delegate's office, and there's only one set of candidates running for the gubernatorial seat, then, 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 then that, section 15-108 says that you don't need to do a primary, but then we take away, you said that we will still have one to allow for the write-in vote, which is kind of contradictory to what was being said earlier. So in other words, if we get that extreme situation where then we just cancel the primary, then, then write-ins will not stand a chance to go, you know, possibly get on the ballot for the general. So that means we would also have to then, I would seem, have to delete then, section 11115.
Okay, I'm, hold on, let me ask. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you.
I'm going to recognize her for Senator, and-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I see is, the Vice Speaker's amendment to strike subsection 15108 will require us to have a primary at all times. And his, I understand, the reason for that is to ensure, with the theme of being as expansive as possible in all of our elections, that that will then support any write-in candidate that wants to attempt, for whatever reasons they didn't get their name on the printed ballot. So that's what I understand, Mr. Chair, that the deletion of subsection 15108, primary election canceled when unnecessary, getting rid of that means that at all times, there will be a primary election for all offices.
That's correct, Senator. And so we can have the Vice Speaker close, if there's no other discussion? And Senator Adam, is that, does that clarify? Vice Speaker?
The retiring speaker is correct. What I'm trying to make sure is that we always have a write-in, I mean, we always have a primary, regardless of whether or not we collude and decide we're only going to run twelve apiece so that we don't have it. There should always be a right for the rest of the electorate to decide that there are other people that they want, that they might be able to send to the general election, and they should all be able to vote.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Speaker. So on the Vice Speaker's amendment, all those in favor? So no, so there's no objection, so motion carries.
Can I, can I say something? To the Vice Speaker, you have a, a primary election, then, so if the write-in candidate, let's say on the Democratic side, runs as a write-in in the primary, do you, you might want to consider how many votes he has to get to be a part of the general election ballot? Is it here, right?
It's there.
So we just need to make sure that it's all clear here.
Yeah, it is. Yes.
If there's, in a primary, and there's like fourteen candidates, that, and there's a write-in candidate, he needs to at least get the seven fifty, because everyone that goes to the general has to have three times the number of signatures required. So he would go. If there's sixteen, he has to beat that sixteenth guy or the fifteenth guy as a write-in, get more votes than him in order to get, to bump those two off. That's the way I would read that.
In the current code, it's section 16110. In the new bill, it's 15110. It's, it's the minimum vote required.
Thank you very much. We're now in section 15109, 15110. We're now in Article Two, 15201, the primary date. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
This is a question of the commission. Have we resolved the issue of being able, is the date of the primary sufficiently ahead of the general election so that we don't have the problem that we had this last time of not getting the ballot to our soldiers who are stationed abroad, who are protecting our right to vote, and not being able to vote themselves because we're running so I mean, I, I just think it's almost criminal that the men and women who are protecting our right to vote are the ones that are being deprived the right to vote because we don't get the ballots out to them soon enough. And so do we need to change the date of the primary to make sure that we get the ballots to them in time and back so they can be counted? Or is there a way that you can, the commission can guarantee that in the upcoming election, that everybody in Afghanistan, or where, or there at the hospital in, in Germany, because they've been injured, that they will get their ballot, and their ballot will get there in time so it can get back here in time so it can be counted?
Vice Speaker, you're specifically asking whether the date, we should change the date of the primary, right? There is a difference of opinion on, on the commission on this. I don't think we've debated it in detail. Personally, I don't think we should change it. I think the forty-five day requirement from the general falls sometime in the latter part of September. I think, and if we follow everything that we're supposed to do, I mean, we had hiccups last time, and that's why we had a problem. But if we follow everything that's outlined, we should meet that forty-five deadline.
Okay. Then, then maybe someone from the commission can enlighten the members, the body, about the problems that we had in the last election, and how many of our men and women stationed in Iraq and Afghanistan, whose votes were, didn't get there in time, or, or didn't get back here in time to be counted? So that they know. Because there was a problem with their vote, right? Because we, we, we've been under scrutiny by the federal government because of the fact that we did conduct a congressional election, and there's some issues to whether or not the men and women that were stationed in Iraq and Afghanistan got their votes in time, and whether it got back here in time for them to be able to be counted.
The answer to both those questions is yes. They got their, their ballot in time, and in fact, one of the provisions, I think the compromise we had, was that we wouldn't count or certify the congressional until ten days after the election, giving enough time to allow those ballots that were sent out to come back. And in fact, there was, if my memory serves me quick, I think there was only probably about, about ten that fell in that ten-day period.
So you're saying to me that there was no problem in this last election of getting the ballots to the soldiers and getting them back in time to be counted?
No, no, I, I think there's been some correspondence, and I guess I'll let legal counsel handle this one.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, as the Vice Speaker and Mr. Mesa both mentioned, there is in fact a, a federal case that I believe everybody's involved, where the Department of Justice took the commission to court, in the district court, regarding the Uniform and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act, which is commonly called YOOCAVA. And they have, I have taken this over from Mr. Cabot, the previous counsel, and just recently, a letter was sent from Mr. Slade, from the Department of Justice, Civil Rights Division, asking about if YOOCAVA was being implemented by the legislature. And I, in fact, just sent him an email yesterday saying it's being entertained this week in the bill. I believe you already discussed it yesterday as part of the absentee voting section. But one of the concerns they again raised was this issue of, of timing. And, and he specifically states here, and he was basing this on apparently information provided by my predecessor, if there was a recount after a primary, and talking about the delay, the way he understands it, the commission could not meet the forty-five day requirement of federal law, and we would be in violation of the federal law and the court order. So, and he asked whether this has been, this concern has been raised with the legislature. So I wanted to make sure that the legislature was aware of that concern. Now whether or not, I don't know how often there are recounts after a primary, but he's just pointing out if there was one, going through the process, it doesn't appear that the process would be completed in time to get the ballots out within the forty-five days required by the law and the court order that the commission is under. So I point that out to this body, so we can take that into serious consideration. And-
And so, has that case been resolved?
Oh, there was, there was a stipulated judgment that was signed by, once again, my predecessor, and I, I, sorry, I don't have that whole file with me. There was a stipulated judgment that the commission would, would abide by the YOOCAVA, and that it would take actions, as I recall, to get, request that the legislature make the changes, which is part of what's in-
The decision by the Department of Justice to sue us over YOOCAVA possible, alleged violation, was based on what? That they had nothing to do in Washington, D.C., and wanted to sue a little territory? Or was there some question about the election, and they had, they wanted to address it? Because I'm a little concerned, and no offense, Mr. Mesa, I don't want us to just gloss over this and say there was no problem. Because Department of Justice would not have brought this action had there not been some issue that had been raised. And I'm just wondering, what is it, and is there something that we need to be aware of so that we can address it?
No offense taken, Vice Speaker. It wasn't the election per se, it was the procedure. Unfortunately, the commission was notified in April of that year of what needed to be done. Unfortunately, that was not brought to the board's attention until September. And then the forty-five day deadline, when those ballots should have gone out, was not being met. That is why Department of Justice came in. And that's outlined clearly in all the, all the court documents.
So is there something that we should know, that we need to clean up, so that we can do, deal with this? To make sure? Because it really, it really bothers me that the thought that we, we could possibly be denying the ones that we claim are the ones that are protecting our right to vote, the right to vote.
When was YOOCAVA passed? Do you know? Do you know when YOOCAVA was passed?
Mr. Chairman, last year, when it was brought to the Guam Election Commission's attention, the Department of Justice was reviewing all the different states to make sure that, that all the states were in compliance with the, with the YOOCAVA. sure that all the states were in compliance with the Yo'okava rules and regulations and mandates. And Guam was not the only one found in violation that had not adopted the laws. And I recall there was a transmittal, I believe there were two or three other states who were in violation. So what they did was they made sure that all these states that were, whose local legislatures had not, you know, adopted or passed to incorporate in their election laws did. And so that's how Guam made it in there because we didn't have it. But it wasn't anything in particular or a particular case regarding Guam.
But passage of this bill would address that?
Yes. According to the Subcommittee, as they reported to the full Commission, that this will satisfy that requirement to adopt it in local law.
But there is some disagreement within your own Commission as to whether or not even the adoption of that would be sufficient time to make sure that everybody's absentee ballots went out in a timely fashion back?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think what it does is it places the Commission on full alert to make sure that while we are trying to meet deadlines and timelines of all that needs to be done, because it's a very detailed process, and because we're also having to deal with following the law, we just need to be really vigilant in making sure that we fulfill those guidelines or those laws, federal laws.
And my comment that there is not unanimity on the Board, on the Commission, was not something I made up. I thought, I just heard it a few minutes ago from another...
And let me clarify that, Vice Speaker. I mean, like I said, it has not been debated, okay? But in through, on formal discussion, there's some who feel that the prime, in order to comply with the feds, that the primary date should be moved. Personally, I don't think it needs to be moved. I think the primary date, and we follow everything that we're supposed to, we can still beat that forty-five deadline.
Hence the vigilance that's required.
But even before the 2010 election, Mr. Mesa, did we not have problems with absentee ballots going out in a timely fashion and getting back in a timely fashion?
Even before the 2010?
Yeah.
There could have been, in the twenty-eight, I mean, oh eight. I don't recall. Okay. But yeah, it's possible.
Well, there was a case, of course, in nineteen eighty-seven where absentee ballots came in late because they were all sent out late. And they were all held back and sent back, sent out all at the same time. So is that the procedure of the Election Commission for absentee ballots to be sent out as the requests come in? Or do you hold them all and then send them all out at one time?
And I wasn't there in eighty-seven, so I don't recall. But the procedure is, once the ballots are printed, we already have a list of people who've requested, they automatically go out, okay? According to procedure, okay? As for eighty-seven, I was not there.
It was nineteen eighty-four, I'm sorry. Nineteen eighty-four.
For which one?
It was nineteen eighty-four. So what is the...
I wasn't there in eighty-four either.
What is the policy of the Election Board, the Commission here, is to send them out as soon as they're printed and then there is a request? Do you send them out as they come in? Or do you hold them off at a certain date to send them off?
As soon as the ballots are printed, all the requests that come in, at that point in time are sent out. As new requests come in, they get sent out as soon as they're processed.
So is there anything written where that, we can be assured that that actually, you know, happens or will happen?
Asking is it in statute or are you asking if I can do it?
No, whether it's in statute. Because you have certain requirements that it says, like here, the Commission shall, within ten days after transmitting. So you've got timelines.
That's correct.
In this case, with absentee ballots being sent out, do you have the same requirement as well as to when they should go out?
Yes, and we'll do it that way.
No, but you don't have it here, written here.
Huh?
It's not written here in these rules.
We may have to recess and read the absent voting because it would be under absent voting.
So what section is the absentee vote?
Absent voting is...
I don't have the Subcommittee report on some of the problems of the last election. If I were to, if I did have it in front of me, would I find that there were problems with absentee ballots in the last election?
I believe you probably will. There's a couple, a few, some complaints. I don't recall how many, but there were some.
So there were complaints, not necessarily from military people, but there may have been also complaints from students that didn't get theirs in time and others who were temporarily away for medical reason?
I think, probably so, but not a whole lot.
I understand. But there's, you know, there are members in this hall who lost reelection on less than fifteen votes. So I'm saying is that we need to count every single ballot and if you can lose an election with three votes, three votes. So I'm just trying to say, every single ballot is crucial, critical, you know, I can't even think of all the different words. But when someone can lose it on three votes and we don't have, and we have a number of ballots that weren't counted in this last election because there are some problems with it, I think we just need to be honest with the body and say, we've had this discussion, maybe we need to change the date. I don't, just tell us. I'm not trying to be belligerent, I'm just trying to get you guys to be honest with us. How do we make this better? That's all I want to do.
If I may, Mr. Vice Speaker, maybe I'm a little confused or something, but I thought that's what we've been doing.
But if we don't tell me that there are absentee ballot problems in the last election because I don't have the report yet with me and I'm just, I just remembered that there were some issues that were raised and that's why I remember a DOJ case being brought, I'm just saying, just be frank with us, tell, you know, this is just us. We need to know what it is that we need to do to try to make this better, to make sure that every vote is counted so that nobody loses on three votes.
And I believe that from my part, I have been upfront with you. I've explained that there have been a number of problems in the last election and that was due a lot because we did not follow standard operating procedure. And a number of those issues have been addressed. And I think equally, personally, being a veteran also, I believe that every single vote should be counted as well as the members of the Commission. Every single vote is important.
Okay, thank you. Vice Speaker, are you...
Just a question along those lines. With the alleged problems that existed, were the problems, did the problems exist because there was absence or there was a lack of a statute or operating procedure or was it because, and I guess I'm answering the question, I mean, the question was answered, you know, about a minute ago, because there was the lack of following procedures that were already in place? Anyway, questions?
Well, short of ourselves as Commissioners going in there and doing it ourselves, the Executive Director at the time said everything was being met, all the deadlines were being met, things were moving along fine, ballots were going out, you know, when they were requested for, through absentee applications. There's not much more that I could say.
Okay. But I just wanted to make that clear so that, you know, I could see and appreciate, again, the collaboration that we, that does continue to exist here. And, you know, we're on the whole discussion here with regards to problems that existed in the past with regards to absentee ballots. So that had nothing to do with, because there was, there was no law that was put in place. There was statute, there was procedure, it just, some cases, and according to the findings of the Subcommittee, it wasn't followed. That's what it was. Yes.
Yes, according to Mr. Mesa, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blatt. Speaker, one...
Mr. Chairman, when the Vice Speaker had asked, of course, in previous elections of what has, you know, some of the procedures not being followed, and I had asked the question as to when then are they mailed out? My understanding is that ballots, absentee ballots, were held back because there were not, there weren't any stamps available to be mailed out, to mail these ballots out. It sounds familiar, yes. And you just finished talking...
I mean, I just remember that, it sounds like something I remember hearing at some time in the last thirty years. I don't remember when.
No, that problem did arise in the last election. I can't recall what the Director's explanation was, other than it was at the end of a fiscal year and they didn't have sufficient funds. And when the Board found out about that, they took action and we got money to get them, the stamps to get it out.
So how long were those ballots then held back before they were mailed out?
I don't know.
So I want to take you back, and I'm sorry, we have to go back then to page ninety-seven, on applicant, it's one zero, one zero six, applicant outside of Guam. When the Commission is requested to mail an absent voter's ballot to an elector and the address to which said ballot is to be mailed is a point outside of Guam, the Commission shall mail the absent voter's ballot to the elector by air mail. And if by any law of the United States official election ballots may be mailed without the payment of postage, it shall do so, comply. It shall so comply. One zero, one zero six.
Speaker, you want to just restate your question for them, please?
Earlier I had asked if it was true that absentee ballots were not mailed out because they were not, there were no postage stamps available. And so we go back now to this section on ten, one oh six, based on what is written here, then does that mean, do you know whether by any law of the United States that ballots can be mailed out without a payment of postage? And if that is true, then this incident in this past election then, there was the held back, the holding back of absentee ballots because there were no postage stamps available?
One thing I guess I want to make sure everybody is aware of, at least as to our military personnel, that the new provisions of this new law under Yo'okava allows for the ballots to be emailed to them. They can, they don't have to be mailed, they can be emailed electronically if they request it that way. So presumably, a lot of these time problems would be resolved assuming that they ask for it by email. Granted, not everybody has to do it that way. I just want to point that out in case it wasn't clear...
So for the military, but anybody else outside, like students maybe then, who are not in the military, to be emailed? Or do you email all absentee ballots now for everyone or is it only for the military?
The way this is written right now, it says for uniformed and overseas citizens. Now, interesting question what an overseas citizen is defined as because anybody in California could be an overseas citizen.
No, it is, an applicant outside of Guam versus a U.S., it didn't say U.S. commissioned uniform...
Well, if you want to change that to say anybody could get it by email, then that's your prerogative. This was the language that, if I'm not mistaken, was put in as a requirement of the Yo'okava for specifically them. That doesn't mean you can't broaden it.
Which language are you talking about?
That section is found at, in the bill, page ninety-seven, one zero, one zero eight, form of absentee ballot.
Okay, yes, that's for the uniformed and overseas citizens. But I'm talking about one zero, one oh six. That's not uniform people, that's just applicants outside of Guam, that's everybody.
True.
So, but do you know then that if there is any law of the United States that says that official election ballots then can be mailed without postage, without payment of postage?
I don't know.
Because why then do we have this language in here?
Speaker, I've been to the post office here. From the Election Commission to the voter, we have to pay for it. The voter to the Election Commission, that can be free.
But this one says the Commission shall mail the absentee voter's ballot to the elector by air mail. So, but then the return is the only one that's free, but that does not say that here.
It doesn't, but the mere, the mere mention that if by any law that it would allow it, then take advantage of it, is what this is saying.
Well, but do all the post office people know this? That when the ballots are being returned? And is it, do you have, is it in an official election ballot envelope that for, with a return address then? So that then the post office will know then that this is a ballot?
We have, yes, there is, the post office dictates the formatting of the envelope.
And it's a special type of envelope? You can't just use any kind of envelope?
Actually, what we can do is bring it up to them and get it approved.
But it's approved here, but what about the other post office from wherever they're coming, mailing it from?
I believe it's, when it's approved here, it's approved across.
I think it's important to make sure that it is a standard, uniform type of an envelope that can be accepted by all postal services?
Speaker... In one oh one oh nine, it talks about the envelopes.
On the U.S. Post Office website and on the Election Assistance Commission... On the U.S. Post Office website, and on the Election Assistance Commission website, there is a link to the specifics for mailing out ballots. And then we, we've already consulted with the post office in, for the upcoming election. And we will continue to consult with them.
I think it's important that maybe the official office, the postal, you know, office, needs to be contacted, and then the information sent to all postal, you know, offices wherever they're at. So to go back again to my earlier question, I think this might be the section where this amendment needs to be placed in, is that we don't find ourselves then, and for whatever the reasons are, that we don't mail them out, you know, and hold them, because we're lacking some posted stamps, that maybe on line 13, where it says the absentee ballot to, must be mailed to the absentee ballot, to the elector by air mail, as soon as the request is received. So that when you get, when you receive the request for an absentee ballot, you mail it out. You don't wait and hold 10, 20, 30 of them and mail it two weeks later, and send them out, like in bulk mail, or mail, or whatever it is, that as soon as you get the request, you go ahead and mail it out.
Provided we already have the printed ballot.
Well, yes, of course, with that understanding, we realize that. I mean, you can't mail it out if you don't have the ballot. But what I'm just saying is, I don't want these ballots to be held back, because, you know, some of them are going as far as Africa, and we want to make sure they get back here on time. So that will be then my amendment, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, that as soon as the request is received.
Okay, on Speaker Juanz's amendment? No objections? That is 10106, and she's adding, the commission shall mail the absent voter's ballot to the elector by air mail, and as soon it is, as soon as the request is received. Provided that the ballots have been printed, so that's the whole amendment. On Speaker Juanz.
And I guess provided that they apply for.
Yeah, that's, that's the, okay. On the amendment, no objections, motion carries. Speaker, vice speaker, you recognize?
Maybe it's, I need, I mean, I really like your website, but I remember the old days, I really liked the reports you used to put out, Joe, the ones with the funny spiral things, and we used to go through it, and we would have everything, you could find everything that was, that had happened in that election. I'm wondering, has the commission issued a report for the 2010 election with all the results, everything on it?
Yes, sir, and it's on the website.
Would that report have a copy of a report or a spreadsheet of the number of absentee ballots that were requested, the number of absentee ballots that were mailed out, the number of absentee ballots that were received back, the dates they were received, if they were counted, and how many were counted?
Uh-huh, there is a spreadsheet on absentee ballots, all the information that you're asking about, I think most of it is there, so, no, I'm not sure. Maybe, yeah, maybe, no, I know I hear. No, I can go, I mean, we can go in and check on it.
That's what I'm trying, because we're talking about this section, and I'm trying to find out how many people were denied the opportunity to vote, or even after they voted, not counted, because as I understand it, a number of those were not counted. So what good is it to exercise your right to vote when it's not counted?
Thank you, vice speaker. Okay, we're going to move on now to 15109, 15110. We're now in Article 2, 15201.
Just for point of clarification, 15110 is existing statute, right? There's nothing changed in it?
I'm sorry, 15201, right?
15110.
15110, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
That is existing statute, there's nothing that was changed in it.
Yes.
Yes. And, and just for point of clarification, that means basically, 750 votes, or 4% of the total number of persons who voted in the primary, who obtained ballots to vote in that primary election for all parties, whichever is less?
Okay, yeah, it's not necessarily 750, it depends upon the required number of signatures.
Okay, let's take, for example, let's go to legislative seat.
Some are 250, what, 750?
250, three times that number, 750.
Yeah.
Or a percentage, 4% of the total number of persons who obtained ballots to vote in that primary for all parties? Is, let's take, for example, a mayor race. What is the minimum number of signatures required for a mayor?
100, but if there's not 1,000 residents, then it's. Okay, in the current statute, it's 16205, nomination papers, and mayor and vice mayors 100, and if there's less than 1,000 votes in the prior election, then they must acquire 5% of the qualified electors based from the prior election.
So you need 5% of the total number of people who voted in the prior election for that seat? My concern here is, and I appreciate that there is a formula that exists, but when you got this here now, this, I mean, granted, it's codified, and we're going to codify it, but then there's, there's going to be the question with regards to a conflict in two different statutes, if that be the case, two different provisions. Is there a provision that's going, that's contained in this piece of legislation that addresses the less than 1,000, if, if the mayor, if the population is less than 1,000? Where's that?
It should be, it should just be 15205 in, in the.
15205?
Yeah, 15205. B.
Um, is 15205B existing statute? And it's, this is where it was originally placed?
Okay, but what we're working off of on the, on the, this, the reason it's showing underlined is just because of the numbering, the numbers were changed. It used to be 16105, it is now 15105. I'm sorry, 15205, yeah, it used to be 16205.
I guess then my question is to Mr. Cook here. Yes, there, I mean, if you look at 15110, and the language that it states there, no person shall be deemed nominated, yet in 15205, it states a whole other methodology or a whole other means to determine. Could there be confusion in this? And then, yeah, one, is one, see, this is on the nomination papers. My concern is on the election, there's difference between a nomination and an election.
Is the number of signatures.
Not necessary, but then you have 15205B.
To get onto the ballot.
But you have 15205B, whereas, okay, how does 15205B, I mean, it appears, obviously there's a conflict between 15110 and 15205B.
Well, B is saying, is if there's fewer than 1,000 people, you don't need as many signatures as what's in A.
Okay, so, okay, that's signatures.
That's just signatures.
Okay, now we go back to, now a dilemma that will be posed, is if you look at 15110, then in order for a mayor to qualify, he's going to need 300 votes. Because this says, three times greater than the number of required signatures.
Right.
Or 4% of the total number of persons, obviously, I'm, you know, I don't think the mayor is going to, the mayor of a small village is going to be able to get 4% of the total vote. I mean, 4% of the total number of people who got a ballot, because I'm assuming.
So it's either 300?
Let's take a mayor, let's, for, for the sake of trying to put tangible things here. Let's take the mayor, I mean, the mayor of a race in sleepy villages of Humatic. Okay, according to the way 15110 is written, okay? Now that we've stricken 15105 out, there's going to be, there's going to be a primary. You're going to now require that mayor to get 300 votes. Or 4% of the total number of people that, that votes, that vote in the primary. It doesn't say this, because it's about, yeah, 4% of the total number of people vote in the primary, whichever is, whichever is less. Now, let's assume, for the sake of argument, that the 4% figure is 352.
Then you need 300 votes.
And then you only have, let's say, and then let's say you only have 600 people come out and vote, and there are four candidates, two on each side. Mathematically, you're not going to have anybody to qualify.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, if 600, if 600 people is all that voted, then all you would need is 24 votes.
But it says 4% of the total number of persons obtained ballots to vote in that primary election for all parties, whichever is less, for all parties.
In that primary election, so, I mean, if, if 600 people came out and voted for four candidates for mayor, you'd have to get 20, you'd have to get 24 votes.
That's what I said, I'm, I.
That's the way I interpret this, like, once again, this isn't anything new, but that's the way I believe it would be interpreted. That's only to move forward, that doesn't mean you win. So then you have many families, and they all get 24 votes.
Well, if, I'm confident then if that's the way the commission today reads it, I'm just hoping that the commission 20 years down the road will read the same way, in that interpretation.
If there's any other way to read it.
You see, because when you say in that primary election for all parties, you know, it can be interpreted, can be construed as, you know, the primary election in totality, and And, you know, again, I see Mr. Cook, Jeffrey, where you, because I can now see how you can see it, it's just that when I read that earlier, and, you know, looking at it, I guess from a, from, you know.
And to the best of my knowledge, that's the way it's always been interpreted.
Understood.
By the commission.
Understood.
Going way back. In fact, I think we may have a.
Well, I don't want to belabor this, this, it's, just, and I know that we're going to, with the opportunity, just, just see we can tighten up the language, to come back to this later and move forward. Okay, Mr. Chair? It's not something that's going to be, it's going to bother the rest of the sections, quite honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. It's about 6:00 PM, a few minutes till 6:00, and so we have a round table at 6:00, so we'll entertain a motion to recess till tomorrow. All by myself? Okay, so we're in recess till tomorrow at 9:00.